So to start with, good afternoon. Thank you for being here for the Texas General Land Office's public hearing for the Community Development Block Grants Mitigation Funds on October 1st, 2019. Please make sure that you are signed in on our sign-in sheet that's located outside. At this time, I'd like to ask before we begin today's meeting that you place all cell phones and other communication devices on silent or off mode. This public hearing is intended to seek input on the development of the state of Texas's action plan for the $4 billion in CDBG MIT funding allocated to the state of Texas for mitigation programs, projects, and planning in areas affected by Hurricane Harvey as well as 2015 and 2016 floods. Starting right after my call to order, the Chief Clerk and the Deputy Land Commissioner for the Texas General Land Office for presentation on mitigation funds. When he concludes, we will transition to our public input period from our attendees. If you wish to provide public input for today's public hearing, please complete a comment card at the registration table. It was the half-page one that was tan. You're welcome to complete a card now, and if you happen to think of something that you want to say later on, please make sure you fill one out and get it to our staff members. If you are holding on to your cards right now, please make sure. And Jennifer Harris. In addition, if there are any questions or comments about the GLO's disaster recovery programs that are currently operating, please make sure that you email CDR@recovery.texas, spelled out, dot gov, or give us a call at 1-844-893-8937. In addition, you're also welcome to visit with us after the hearing concludes. If there are folks that are interested in talking about HAP or HRP, we do have staff members that are here who can help you with your HAP and HRP applications. So for the public input portion, again, this intention of this hearing is to talk about the mitigation funds and to get input about the mitigation funds from our attendees. Each individual speaker has up to three minutes to provide their input, individual being someone representing themselves and their own views. I will be keeping time. In addition, for those who are here representing a delegation, which is five or more individuals in this room that have shared interests, you have up to five minutes. Please be aware that this public hearing is being recorded, and any persons choosing to speak in this public hearing are consenting to the online publication of their comments. Once we get through all of the comment cards and there are no longer any individuals present who wish to provide input, we will conclude the public hearing. If it does not last until our projected close of 3:00 p.m., we will conclude prior to 3:00 p.m. and welcome any further input again at our email, CDR@recovery.texas, spelled out, dot gov. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce the Chief Clerk and the Deputy Land Commissioner for the Texas General Land Office, Mr. Mark.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here. Let me just kind of, I want to address a couple of things before we get started. And first, I'd like to say thank you to all the elected officials that are here. We had a chance, Judge Brannick, appreciate you allowing us to use the facilities to discuss this. I know Representative Phelan and Representative James White are here as well. We had a meeting, kind of sit down and walk through a lot of this, a lot of different questions from all the different communities and representatives. I think the biggest question was, what's taking so long? When is it coming? What can we do? So we want to, we want to talk a little bit about that today. I do want to say, apologize upfront because I know the nature of this, and I'll kind of walk through how this process works, but because it is a public comment, everything y'all say is going to be on the record. We will address it accordingly when we're putting this action plan together, but I will be the first to admit it doesn't make sense for me to stand up here and talk and say I can't answer questions. But what we're here to do is kind of walk you through this and then hear from y'all on what these projects should look like, what's the best way to kind of use these funds. So, um, CDBG mitigation, what is this? What is this? This, I guess, is the other piece of it. You may realize the GLO is the state entity that's managing a little over $5 billion right now throughout 49 counties, four through HUD, and it's for housing. This is the HAP program, the homeowner reimbursement program, being run through our office, and we're currently managing that. This register is specifically for mitigation funding. This is looking at what can we do, large-scale drainage, infrastructure, how do we prevent future storms? Perfect example of this, we were supposed to have this meeting last week, and then Amelda had something to say about that. So I think this is a good time to talk about how do we address any, any future storms. One of the things to cover off the bat is what's taking so long? What have y'all been doing, going on here? This mitigation funding, you'll see on the screen, if I can get my head out of the way of the shadow there, $4.3 billion was allocated. That was allocated back in February of 2018. The Congress acted quickly to get this money out. We, the state, cannot do anything with the dollars until HUD publishes the rules, and the rules are telling us, here's what you can do with this money, and more importantly, here's what you cannot do with this money. So the money comes out in February of 2018, and it sat until August 30th, 2019. So just roughly a month ago, HUD put out the register that said, all right, state, here's the rules, here's what you can and can't do, so now you need to develop a plan to go with this to see what these programs are going to look like. Texas was allocated $4.3 billion total, whereas Harvey, there were 49 impacted counties. This has 140 counties that are eligible for funding, and the reason for that is because of the repeated flooding. There are entities that were flooded in 15, 16, and then as well as Harvey, and this covers all three. State action plan, telling how the state is going to spend the money, how the programs are going to look, where, where it'll impact the communities, that's due back to HUD, February 3rd, 2020. This is sort of a breakdown of what that $4.3 billion looks like. A little over $4 billion was for Harvey, 169 million for the 16 floods, 61 million for 15, and we've been discussing this earlier this morning. We had several officials that said, hey, I'm in Orange County, I, golden ticket, I was in 15, 16, and 17. So there are communities that we've seen that have just had repeated flooding. So the question, one of the reasons they said it took so long to get this moving is what, what is mitigation? The rule that HUD has put in the federal register to say, what is mitigation? If we looked at housing, we knew what housing was. Unfortunately, we've been doing this for a while, so Rita, Dolly, Ike, we understood what housing was. We'd never seen anything quite the scale of Harvey, but we had done housing programs. We, we knew how, how that worked. This is the definition of what mitigation is. So these monies that we're talking about here today, this is what it can be used for, activities that increase resilience to disasters, reduce or eliminate long-term risk of loss, life, injury. It's a pretty broad definition. This is one of the things I think is going to benefit us going forward, is any project that we approve that comes from y'all has to fit in that definition. So I think we can, I think we can get there. You look at where we are, where this money has to be spent, HUD has specific counties, they demonstrated as the most impacted and distressed. They said these are the ones that were hit the hardest. 50% of the money has to be spent within those counties. The other 50% in the additional counties, not in the, see the dark orange, that's the most impacted. The, the other thing is there's a timeline with this money. We're still, there were problems with Ike. We're still seeing Ike dollars being spent. So HUD has put a timer on this one, the housing money, they said, this one, they said, they're realizing the scale of some of these projects are much larger, take longer to complete. 50% of the money must be spent in six years, 100% within 12 years. The other thing we hear a lot about is low to moderate income. The first round of Harvey money, 70% of that money had to be spent in areas that were considered low to moderate income. With the mitigation dollars, they backed that off somewhat and said 50% of the money must be spent in low to moderate income. Planning funds, so that's a portion of this, for planning studies, things of that nature, we can use up to 15% of the money. So this is just a, kind of showing you another, look, this has identified the counties that are the most impacted counties. Did, I have no idea why they picked out individual zip codes as well within a county, so Mata Gorda County, for example, is not the most impacted county, but there is a zip code within there that is. So got to figure out how to get these monies to all of these areas. The state action plan, what is that? That is, that's sort of our playbook on how this money will be spent, how we're going to identify what type of programs we're going to do, develop methods of distribution for spreading this money throughout the counties. One of the things that's very different with this mitigation dollars versus the housing dollars, you look at additional requirements, housing, they based everything on unmet need. Who, who was damaged? What's the unmet need? We understand how that works. We can look at PA numbers, IA numbers, and kind of go from there. This one is a little different because they're going on base. How do, how do we make these areas more resilient? How do we build infrastructure and drainage to protect this from future flooding? They want coordination and leveraging funds. One of the things we talked about with local officials are, you may hear, okay, there's HUD CDBG funds, there's HUD mitigation funds, there's FEMA, HMGP dollars, there's money the state set aside. What, that's great, how do I use this? So one of the things in the action plan we're talking about is to make best use of all those funds. We don't want the local communities coming out of pocket unnecessarily, so can we use some of these CD dollars to help some of the existing funding that's out there? Yes, we can, and that's one of the things we're planning on doing. Another thing they talked about was local, regional, long-term planning and implementation, including development and enforcement of building codes. That's been a huge thing HUD has hit on. We've talked with county judges about this quite a bit, is building codes to make sure the, the structures we built with Ike, to more updated standards, weathered the storm a lot of times in Harvey, the stuff, we had a few, we went and looked at one just last week that was built with Harvey recovery dollars that went through Amelda. It was fine. So it's, they're trying to force the state into, look, let's get the most updated building codes we have, we can to, to help future-proof this. Is the timeline, the stakeholder outreach. So what we're doing, again, is going around, we're doing several of these public meetings throughout the state to meet with the public, to meet with the local electeds, and figure out what do you need? What drainage infrastructure looks very different in southeast Texas versus Houston versus Rockport, so we need to hear from y'all, what, what does this look like? So this is the timeline of what we're going through. Right now, as we said, the register was published August 30th, so we're going through, we're drafting what our action plan looks like, but in doing that, we're going out and talking to the communities to hear everything y'all say to us, we're going to address in the action plan in some, some form or fashion. We will get that put together, then once that's complete, we'll have a document that says, all right, that $4.3 billion, here's how it's going to be spent, here's where the money goes, here's what the projects, even if it's not identified specific projects, the type of projects we're looking for. So at that point, you will have the full game plan. This is kind of just a first blush of what, what do we need to put in here? And that's what we need to hear from y'all. Once we've had that discussion, we put everything in there, then it has to go out for a 45-day public comment period. So that will give everybody the chance to say, okay, did they listen to us? Have they, have they put everything in there? You'll have a chance to comment on that. February 3rd, 2020, that's when the action plan is due to HUD, meaning turn it into them, are they good with it? They're the ones that have the ultimate authority over these dollars. I'm hoping that they turn this around quickly. I don't know if they will or not. We will, we will continue pressing. So again, stakeholder input, we're going to have at least four public hearings, two of them prior to the public comment period. We did one last week, we're doing one here today, and then another one in Orpitz tomorrow. Eligibility, this was a, some of the discussions we were having earlier. For the first time, the, the mitigation, again, because it is future-proofing, does not require a tieback to the specific disaster. So when we were looking at housing projects, and we're do, we're doing housing, the question is, was this house damaged during Harvey? If it was, we can repair it. If not, sorry, these funds aren't available. Here with this mitigation, because we're looking at larger infra-scale, infrastructure project, much larger scale, it's, it doesn't have, you don't have to specifically tie back and say, yes, this was damaged during Harvey. The question is, how is this going to help protect the community from future storms? So it gives us a little more leniencies. We still have to go through all the, the same, excuse me, same CDBG requirements and regulations to tie back to a specific storm, because again, what we've seen in a lot of these areas is how do you even tie it back? It's the same, the same thing flooded 15, 16, 17, and a week ago. So we're, there's no specific tieback. What is an eligibility or an eligible activity for infrastructure? This is upgrading water, sewer, solid waste, communications, anything that we think we can do to help protect you from future flooding, we're going to try to put that in through infrastructure dollars. Multi-use infrastructure has been one we've seen where communities have done that, where it's a, it's a building that can serve general, you know, government purposes, but also serve in terms of a shelter in times of emergency. So try to get that done as well. Green or natural mitigation, this is developing wetlands, coastal protection barriers, that is your, your first line of defense. So projects of that nature will be covered as well. Housing, this is one of the interesting pieces. I said at the beginning, we put out that first $5 billion in Harvey dollars, it was solely for housing. The only thing it focused on was housing. This mitigation, at first, they said, okay, let's protect the housing, we're not going to allow you to do anything associated with housing. They have now said in the register that there is going to be monies available to do some additional housing. We're seeing certain areas of the state, southeast Texas was one in general, where the demand for housing post-Harvey was way over what the original monies that had gone out. So it's given us a little flexibility to say, okay, if there are areas that are still need of single-family housing rebuild, reconstruct, multifamily housing, there will be a chance to put some dollars to use for that. And again, it's more of a mind of, how do we elevate these? How do we, how do we harden them to try to protect them from future storm damage? Economic development, this is another kind of broad-based development, technologies, hardening of commercial, commercial areas and facilities. It's just things that will help us protect against future storm damage. There's a ton of, as you know, in this area, economic impact to the state. If southeast Texas goes down, so does the rest of the state. We have just over here with the port and other facilities, so it'll be a chance to allow some development there as well. So some of the planning dollars that'll be spent, they are focused, and let me take the chance here to say, one of the things that they're looking at with this is, when they talk about planning with your hazard mitigation plans and enhanced state planning, one of the big things they're looking at with these dollars is they don't want to do small, one-off projects that maybe it's a drainage system that helps this one neighborhood. They're looking at, this is a huge billion-dollar impact to the state, how do we do this on a regional basis? So that's one of the things we've had with the officials is, it's, it's foolish on HUD's part to look at water staying contained in one project, and they're, they're, they're aware of that now. You look at the way everything flows, we've talked to folks in this area, they may not get a ton of rain, but if it, if we get rain up to the north, the flows are going to impact us here. So this is, they're looking at large-scale projects, three to five, three to five million-dollar minimum projects, so that we can address some of these larger-scale concerns, so that we can really do some infrastructure, some drainage systems that will really help all of these communities. Ineligible activities, fundings for buildings used for the general conduct of government, we can't build you a courthouse. That's one of the things, emergency response services, again, you can't, we can't go in and build an emergency, you know, a fire station or an ambulance, but we can't enhance the resiliency of that, meaning we, how do we help protect those? Everybody knows that those are going to be some of the first responders out, so how do we help spend funds on those, perhaps not to build the thing, but to prevent it from flooding? Forced mortgage payoff, this is where a lender would come in and say, no, 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 I'm going to help elevate and build this, we'll just take the money directly. So we, that is not an eligible expense of that. An enlargement of dam or levee beyond original design, again, that's something, if we can go in and use these funds to restore a levee that was destroyed, we can do that. Projects, this is something, it's a little, little different in this. Typically with our action plan, we'll go in and say, okay, here's the kind of projects we're doing. And it's kind of a baseline figure that says, okay, you'll submit projects that kind of fit these parameters. Covered project of what HUD is calling out is a single project with a total project cost of $100 million or more, at least $50 million in CDBG funds being used. So this is a single project that's going to take up $50 million in CDBG funds. I've said this at all the public meetings, if you have one of those, please let me know. I have not. I know they're talking large scale, we haven't, we haven't seen one of these as of yet. If there is one, it needs to be called out specifically identified in, in the action plan. One of the other things they talk about through here is, again, when we looked at housing, you'd look at unmet need, see what was there, we could address it. HUD is stressing cost-benefit analysis. What is the cost-benefit analysis of this $10 million infrastructure project we're doing? So they're, they're looking heavily at the cost-benefit analysis. One of the concerns we had in some of the early public meetings is, well, if I'm in a rural community, I may need this, I may really need this funding, but I, dollar-wise, it just doesn't stack up because of value of this property. That's one of the tough things here, is we're trying to judge, HUD keeps hitting on, this needs to have a cost-benefit analysis, but yet they also say 50% of these funds must be spent in low to moderate income communities. So you're trying to wage those two against each other to see how these come out. So I know that is, again, a, a ton of information, and I just, we could stress anything, it is, they're looking at large-scale product, projects, how do we protect against the next storm? How do we get the communities to work together on this? And the purpose of these, again, is to hear from y'all, to say, hey, that's a terrible idea, or this is a great idea we have for a project here that benefits Chambers, Jefferson, Orange, everywhere. So we're trying to get input. Once we have all that together, we're going to come back and say, all right, here's what, here's what it looks like, and then give you a chance to comment on that. So again, I, I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I think now we're going to turn it over for public comments, and we have those, have those ready.
Thank you, Mark. So we will progress to our portion of public comment. As indicated earlier, the comments provided and the input provided is for feedback on what y'all believe mitigation funding should address. And so for today, I do have several public comments here. I want to indicate to folks that if you do think of something that you'd like to provide a comment on, please make sure to fill out one of these. What'll end up happening is, we take these calls and have them correspond with the speakers that come up and provide a public comment here, so that we can record them and make sure that it is archived and provided as feedback we received on the action plan. Fill that out at any moment in which you think of something. You can flag one of our staff members down or grab one yourself. So when it comes to the public comment, I'll have our names called out here. I have folks in sequential order when they submitted theirs. This podium stand up here in the front and adjust the microphone so that it best fits you, now we can pick up the audio. To start with, for our host, Judge Brannick, did you have an advantage you wanted to say?
Appreciate y'all being here. The county has unfortunately a long history of working collaboratively with the Texas General Land Office, and we're always pleased that you hear our concerns and most often respond to those. As I've said several times, and you've heard me, Mark, say it several times, that improved resilience in our community is going to be dependent on FEMA doing away with the substantial damage rule. We would go to three-foot above base flood elevation for new construction in our community tomorrow were it not for that rule. Make incremental improvements in the resiliency of our housing stock through that mechanism. One thing I heard at the very end on covered projects that causes me concern, especially knowing that Harris County has already passed a $2.5 billion bond issue, that, you know, that would be the only ones with the funding needed, I would be concerned about Harris County sucking all the wind out of the room. In the mitigation field, particularly since they got the direct allocations in Harvey, they're self-administering them. I don't know if Representative White's still here, but, you know, several years ago, the state passed storm requirements for new construction, and they worked. We saw during Rita, a lot of homes that were, suffered significant damage and destruction that build back according to the new windstorm requirements, and subsequently, and Ike did not suffer the type of damage. So we know that resiliency measures work, but one of the things I wanted to mention to Representative Phelan and, and White is that the state has traditionally held any land use control authority from counties, cities, but counties being an arm of the state, we can determine base flood elevation under, through our floodplain manager and the commissioner's courts. You can make sure that onsite sewage systems are kept up to date, but there is no other regulatory authority that counties have to improve resilience and building standards to withstand natural disasters. The buyouts are a non-starter for most units of local government because of the FEMA requirement that you preserve those properties in perpetuity without any development on them. The acquisition program, you can redevelop, but you're buying them out at post-disaster fair market value, so that's not attractive to homeowners. And if we could redevelop those properties and get FEMA's consent to do that in the buyout program, we could assure that newly-built structures on those properties were elevated to higher elevations that would make them more resilient to natural disasters. So I want to thank GLO for being here today. Y'all have been great partners. The delay that's occasioned by getting out mitigation and CDBG dollars is not the fault of the GLO, it has to do with the federal requirements and the federal register and minutia at the federal level. So we appreciate the partner that you've been to us.
Judge, all righty. And that kicks off our public input from our hosts. To review the rules for our public input, three minutes for any individuals representing themselves, and then five minutes for any individuals that are representing a delegation. So for our elected officials, they represent their constituencies, and they will have up to five minutes. Our next one is for Mr. Lonnie Hunt, the P Texas Council of Governments. You have five minutes.
I won't take my first, my full five minutes, which would be a first for me. Again, thank you to the Texas General Land Again, thank you to the Texas General Land Office for all of your support. I just have a couple of points I'd like to offer on behalf of our, we represent 12 counties and approximately 50 cities in the deep east Texas Council of Governments region. Since this funding is not only for Hurricane Harvey, but also for the 2015 and 2016 floods, we have seven of our 12 counties that are disaster counties under Harvey, but all 12 of our counties are disaster-declared for this particular program. And so, one of the things I would like to ask, at least for consideration, is on those 2015 and 2016 floods, which I think is proposed to be competitive grant applications, that you at least consider in a region like ours, where the entire region is under the disaster declaration of creating an allocation for that region for those 15 and 2016 floods. And the reason is, we're all rural, we're all small, we're all poor, and we are just not able to compete with the larger cities and counties of the state when it comes to developing projects that qualify and competitive grant applications. Very dependent on our private grant administration firms, and they do a great job, but they're stretched thin because every one of their clients is in this same program, trying to access whatever funds they can access. So the, the cities and counties simply do not have any staff that can help develop these applications and, and be more competitive. And for that reason, I would hope you would consider some sort of an allocation for the region for those 2015 and 2016 floods, especially in regions like ours, where everybody, the entire region, was declared. The other thing that I would request, and this is not, this is just one, many needs we have, but I just want to go on the record that the folks back in our region have a tremendous need for interoperable public safety communications. And so, we're hoping that some of these mitigation funds can be used, because obviously, if you can't communicate during an emergency disaster, that, that, that puts a lot of lives at risk, and we need to be able to communicate, not just counties or entities, but the folks in one county that have people evacuating to other counties, need to be able to have that interoperable communication. So that's important. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your public comment. We have State Representative Dave Phelan, and on deck, we have Sally Baco, Sally Baco with the City of Galveston. Representative Phelan? Stepped out.
Phelan had to go.
Yes, sir. Gotcha. Thing is, we got his public comment card, we're good there. So, the legislative coordinator for the City of Galveston, Sally Baco.
My name's Sally Baco, I'm with the City of Galveston, I'm their legislative coordinator, and I'm grateful to be here today. I want to first extend our sympathies to the folks in Beaumont and the area for the horrible event you've had to suffer through in 24 months again. Galveston certainly understands your pain, and, and you're, you're in our thoughts and prayers. We're very grateful for what GLO is doing in terms of working with communities on CDBG mitigation funds. We were extraordinarily grateful for the leadership that Representative Phelan exercised during the last legislature, when the legislature took on flooding through SB 7 and SB 8. We do have singular concerns that affect Galveston. We're an island, and while we really appreciate and acknowledge the importance of regional planning, we're hoping that as GLO looks at planning, looks at regions, remembering there are communities like Galveston that are islands that don't flood in the same manner as other communities that are impacted regionally. Our flooding is a little bit different. Yes, we have the hurricane and the tropical storms, but we also are impacted by sea level rise, as well as significant rain events. It's up to four to five times a year, and flood Galveston. And I guess our concern is, because we don't have that typical kind of watershed ripple effect, pardon the pun, in, in our flooding, it doesn't mean that we don't have a significant impact on our region. You know, Galveston is a significant tourism destination, we're the fourth-largest cruise line port in the nation, 12th in the world. We have a, a significant economic impact on the county, the region, and so, as a result, I wanted to make sure that, you know, we could work closely with GLO on understanding what's unique about Galveston Island, how we flood, and some of the mitigation efforts that are starting with Galveston right now, that play, that can play a part in the state's action plan. First and foremost, our pump stations and our ground drainage. We have a drainage system that in some cases is 100 or more years old. We're in the planning stages of seven pump stations from the sea, the seawall to the port, that would put in place and, and have a significant mitigating effect on flooding up to a 25-year event. Right now, we, our first pump station is completely designed, and we have the other six in partial design, so we're working very actively on that. We have a waterline replacement. This is an 1894 waterline that comes directly from the Gulf Water Authority, Gulf Coast Water Authority, across to the island. It is our single source of water, potable water. That is designed and ready to go, it's a $9 million project. We have a septic to sewer that has a significant impact on water quality for Galveston Island. This is a $13 million effort that's going on to transfer up to 490 home residents from a septic system to a sewer system. That has a significant impact on water quality after even major annual event flooding, much less a more significant event like a hurricane or tropical storm. Finally, one thing that I would like to add is, you know, we're very active in working with the region, certainly on the coastal storm suppression system, popularly known as Ike Dyke in our area, but the coastal, but also, we have another regional project, it is our Pelican Island Bridge. Texas A&amp;M University at Galveston resides on Pelican Island. University has a significant impact, economic impact for the region. This is a 60-year-old bridge that really has a life of about 10 years left to it, and something that we feel may be worthy of some consideration on the covered project side of the action plan. And finally, that was my bell. Finally, when it comes to the citizen advisory committees, like with the flood regional planning committees, active involvement and representation for islands like Galveston, coastal communities like Galveston, we would really urge, as you're forming those, to take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your public comment. As a reminder about any residents or other individuals that are in the room that are curious about HAP or HRP, any of our GLO recovery programs for Harvey recovery, we do have staff members stationed in the back, in that back room over there, that can help you in case you're curious about it, or if you needed help with your application. So, we will transition to our next one, which is Hal Ross, and on deck is Mr. Joel Hardy with the City of Pearland.
Ross, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm from what we call Mid-County here, and in Mid-County, we're kind of between two drainage districts, Drainage District 6 and Drainage District 7. I've heard you speak of regional drainage planning and regional drainage, drainage development as part of eligible project. My concern, though, however, is watershed planning would probably be more appropriate, because I think our two drainage districts share the same watershed, however, with competing constituents and competing objectives. We observed this time at this, in this flood, that as Beaumont moves more water south, that's less capacity for the drainage district in the south. My point, I guess, is maybe watershed-based planning, rather than regional planning, would be a better way to approach it, and at some point, I think that we find some way to integrate and coordinate a comprehensive plan.
Mr. Joel Hardy, and on deck, we have Mr., as if I butcher your name, Brad Hayquist.
Thank you, Jonah. Joel Hardy, City of Pearland, Grants and Special Projects Administrator. My comments are very brief, of course, very grateful to be here in my hometown of Beaumont, Texas. Unfortunately, my stop prior to coming here was to my mother's home, that's flooded repetitively now, within the last 24 months, and in a community that represents an aging population. I think this work is very important along those lines, and you'll probably hear that story being told throughout the disaster-affected region. I, I think the City of Pearland represents a little bit of a different community, because we are a fast-growing community that's rather young, if you will. Most of our housing stock is post-1960, post-1965, and in our community, where we had 1,784 homes flood in Harvey, most of those were in the older area town. And I would encourage the GLO to look at a mitigation program that allows us to address this ongoing concern about how development takes place outside of these older areas of many towns throughout the region, and it just results in inundation of flood in those older communities. And we want to be able to kind of mitigate those types of issues as well. Other concern we have is, we have what could be a covered project. However, we're concerned about the threshold at $100 million, because communities like ours just don't have the solvency to front those kinds of expenditures under the current budget. So we would ask that the GLO consider lowering that threshold to at least $75 million. And always, my concern is the low-to-moderate income that goes along with the CDBG program. In these situations, I think you're going to find that communities are going to have trouble spending that money, meeting that 50% threshold, and I would encourage the GLO to fight with HUD continuously, along the lines that when a community gets hit as hard as it was hit with Harvey, for example, a lot of times, the community, community-wide faces economic hardships in ways that, you know, those dynamics need to be considered. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your public comment. Up next, we have Mr. Brad Hayquist. On deck, Madison Sloan with Texas Appleseed.
My name's Brad Hayquist, I represent the Reeseville Municipal Utility District, I'm their general manager. I thank you, the GLL, for coming and having this public forum. I come from a kind of a different point of view here, public health and safety, reducing the suffering for the, in the hardship on the communities, since we've learned from Ike and Rita and Melda, and all those lessons learned, we're able to operate more efficiently and react to these situations. But however, when you don't have standby generators at lift stations and wells, we're a pressurized sewer system. We cover 300 square miles in north-central, north of I-10, Newton and Jasper County. The inability to have standby generators at all our facilities inhibits our ability to isolate areas. We were blessed during Melda that we didn't have a wind event, and then like all the local utilities, we maintain water pressure and residuals. But you have a wind event, or you have some other catastrophic failure, and all of a sudden, you don't have residuals, you don't have pressures, so you've got to shut your system down. So not only do you have water, not have any water, the community cannot return safely. So we're a bed community. However, there's been more and more commercial development in our area, and because of that, that strains some of our systems. As an example, we, in those 300 square miles, we have approximately 220 miles of main lines, but there's only 50 fire hydrants. So planning when the system was put in was not sufficient to take care of some sort of disaster or calamity that could occur in the future. So like some of my brethren here have talked already, let's look at some of these smaller systems, the inability to larger systems, or to be from one large system to another, those are the sort of things that you need to have in a natural disaster, where the communities can share utilities, such as the electric infrastructure does. So it wouldn't be that difficult to lay pipe in between utilities with, under the guidance of the TCEQ, of course, that can enable systems to continue to function, so that people could come home and work. And the areas that we're in, that's where the people live that populate these plants, so we have a large impact on, on those as well. So when we're talking about multi-hundred-million-dollar projects versus smaller projects that can keep the utilities going in our community, so that we can populate the plants, is really a huge issue. So I thank you for allowing me to speak today, and I hope to hear from y'all in the near future. Thank you.
Your public comment. Up next, we have Madison Sloan with Texas Appleseed. On deck, Mr. David Waxman, representing himself.
Thank you. My name is Madison Sloan, and I am the Director of Disaster Recovery at Texas Appleseed. Let's start by encouraging the state to do more outreach in the impacted and distressed areas. This hearing is a very bad time for people who work, there may or may not be public transportation for people in more outlying areas. People are dealing with the Melda aftermath, which is not the state's fault, but the fact that the most, some of the most affected people aren't here doesn't mean their needs shouldn't be kept into account, taken into account. We also hope the state will keep in mind that the 50% in most impacted and distressed areas is not a limit, and that in fact, the areas on the coast, which are most at risk from sea level rise and the increased frequency and strength of storms, may need, may be the highest-risk areas, and may need more than 50% of this funding. We would also, although HUD has emphasized the use of FEMA hazard mitigation plans, we would strongly recommend not be the primary source for mitigation needs assessments. These may be out of date, they may not be taking into account the, the new normal, unfortunately, and there are particular problems with FEMA's cost-benefit analysis formula, which values property over people. You know, we can see the data, that, that FEMA money has gone overwhelmingly to more wealthy communities, that has, it has really left out low-income communities, rural communities, areas where the property is not worth as much. Same with Army Corps of Engineer funds. The federal register notice itself gives some alternatives to using the FEMA methodology for covered projects. You know, we are encouraged to hear the state talk about looking at other issues, but we think the FEMA, using the FEMA cost-benefit analysis is frankly unjust. We want to emphasize, you know, disasters don't discriminate, that in particular, the trauma and loss are horrific for everyone, but we are in a position where there has been historical discrimination, where particularly low-income communities and communities of color have been pushed into the most geographically vulnerable areas. The west side of Port Arthur, for example, was the de jure segregated area of the city. It is surrounded on three sides by major industrial uses. As a side note, we would also really encourage the state to consider mitigating these kind of hazards. We saw areas that were flooded with chemicals after Hurricane Harvey, plant explosions, that areas that were historically segregated, there is also often a discriminatory failure to invest in basic infrastructure. You know, we think, you know, watershed-based planning is extraordinarily important, but this also needs to recognize that if certain communities don't have basic infrastructure, and they are not connected to and cannot benefit from a regional-level project, that's not okay. That inflicts further damage on these communities, which have the hardest time recovering, and where displacement, you know, affects regional economic growth, when you lose your workforce, and when you have people who are driven deeper and deeper into poverty. We urge the state to very, take a very careful look at southeast Texas, the Harvey method of The Harvey method of distribution, or the just, method of distribution for Harvey funds for infrastructure and buyouts did not look at unmet need. They came up with a weather model, much like the one which diverted funds from the coast after Ike. So Port Arthur got only two times the funding of cities with a population of 1% of its population. Beaumont, less than two times the funding of cities with 0.05% of its population. Unincorporated areas of all three counties were very underfunded. And I'm not saying in any way that this was intentional, but frankly, the areas, you know, the, the formula had the effect of driving money away from low-income communities and areas with more people of color. I never finish early, but, you know, I want to acknowledge that the federal system of disaster recovery, these different funding sources, these different sets of rules, does not make this easy on anyone, you know, not the state, not the counties, not the, the local governments. And, you know, we are excited about this emphasis on forward-looking planning and mitigating the impact of future disasters. And I want to thank all of you for the work you're, you're going to have to do on this one. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Mr. David Waxman. On deck, I apologize, the ink smudged a little bit, but a Mr. Stevenson, it looks like a Mr. Carey Stevenson on deck.
I'll try to be brief. My name is David Waxman. I am a grant consultant, and what's been said here today, I couldn't agree more with, with all of it. But so we all understand each other, recovery is recovery to the particular entity, whether it be Galveston or Jasper County or Jefferson County. Whoever it is, their recovery is their own, and they'll make it their own. So for us, we like to see as much flexibility given to them as possible. What they need to do may not be anything like what they need to do in Jasper County. The buyouts have not been the very best idea in the world. In fact, while there is certainly some needs for buyouts, they, they pale in comparison to the need for infrastructure programs. If you can use infrastructure programs to stop the homes from flooding, why is it that you want? That's because of an allocation. It, it shouldn't be because of an allocation. We need a better reason than that. We hope that as you all go through your process and, and write your plan, that you will give allocations to regions like the D East Texas Council of Governments, SET, RPC, so that they can give an allocation to their cities and counties, so that they can do the things that they need to do. And you did certainly mention before about water and sewer. For a lot of us, we have to work with special districts, and those special districts provide water and sewer. Without them, not sure I'd know where we'd be. That's, they're pretty important. So, yes, it's up to the county to bring them into the fold, but to the extent that you can, we'd like that brought into the fold. Okay? They have a lot to offer. They're providing basic human services to our folks. And as far as generators, I know counties like this one in Jasper and many others that reached in their pocket of their allocation and bought generators for their water supply corporations. So, you know, we can certainly do some things that we need to do if we're given the flexibility. That's about all I have to say, except I would like to give you a photograph of China we don't have an embargo with. This China is China, Texas, and that's what Amelda did to them. And you can see the entire town is underwater. There's good reasons for that, but there are ways to fix it. And whether it be with Drainage District Six or in other means, working relationships are there, and we hope to continue them. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Again, I apologize if the ink has smudged, but it looks like a Mr. Stevenson. On deck, we have, on deck, we have a Mr. Greg Richard.
Greg Richard, basically going to be talking about the city of Port Arthur. I expect the, I guess we're, we're looking at Tri, I'm only referring to the tri-county here that got affected by Harvey, Jefferson, Orange, and I guess Harden. Those three counties, I think, it's no doubt in anyone's mind, Port Arthur suffered the most damage in terms of finances of any of the three counties. I'm expecting us to have the lion's share of the mitigation funding directed at Port Arthur. I'm not sure if you guys had any conversation with the U.S. Corps of Engineers and Drainage District Southern, but they're operating on a, a system that's what, 70, 80 years old? And back in November of 2017, they came to a meeting, and they told us they've got a new plan and had to. The drainage system, but it's going to cost money. So I was just, I, I, the city of Port Arthur and D D seven, I'm not sure if they've done anything about the new plan that the Corps of Engineers have to improve the, the drainage system. But I mean, all the developments happened the past 80 years, so I wondered, the city fled like it did because of Harvey. So I don't know if you guys looked into talking with the U.S. Corps of Engineers of helping them to, helping, helping our tri, our area finance the new plan, flooding, because all the water runs through Port Arthur. I mean, flooding didn't just happen with Port Arthur water. We have to deal with water coming from Mc County elsewhere running through our neighborhoods. So I mean, so I said, I would suggest, I would expect us to get the lion's share of that mitigation money.
Your public comment. For one moment, last call for a Mr. Stevenson, first name starts with a C. We'll go ahead and move on. Next speaker is Tina Walker, resident of Angelina County. On deck is Judge Allen from Jasper County.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Tina Walker. I'm a resident of Angelina County, and I would just like to second Mr. Hunt's comment about the counties don't have the ability to do land use planning or zoning. And so as I look at some of these ideas for regional planning and looking at land development code, that doesn't meet our restrictions as to what the counties are able to do. Additionally, with these, I guess, one of the questions that I'd like to see is whether or not these federal funds would be able to be used as match for federal bridge replacement programs for off-system projects that TechStop administers. There may be some restrictions on timing since TechStop programs those bridge replacement projects several years in advance. So that would be something that we would want to take a look at. And just to echo the rural nature of this region, you know, a lot of the county roads, even if they're paved, aren't necessarily 18 feet wide. I know my county road, I have to pull over and let the garbage truck go by. So as we're looking at planning for our infrastructure from a transportation perspective, we need to look and see how, if any funding could be used to do a plan to help these rural areas program long-term improvements to the transportation system so that these first responders can get out to these risky flood-prone areas. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Up next, Allen with Jasper County. On deck, Mr. John Beard with the Port Arthur Community Action Network.
Thank you very much, sir. Mark Allen, County Judge, Jasper County, Texas. I just, I'm going to be brief, but I just want to state that we need to stay focused on where the damage was. Hundreds of thousands of east Texans, southeast Texans, that their homes are destroyed and seem to be repeatedly being destroyed. And we need to put our money where our mouth is, and, and I think we should focus on that. There's a lot of great ideas all over the state of Texas. I feel like we should earnestly look at repairing that damage, and we should focus on these projects first. Now, I do believe in a regional concept. However, I also believe that we should also look at it in different ways, like flood basins, and allow for us, for each individual jurisdiction that was affected, had water in the homes and water damage, to be able to, to utilize our funding or our regional allocation of funding and be able to apply it within those basins that are directly affected. We're all linked down here, and we all need to be able to get the water out. If Jefferson County can displace a gallon of water, that's one less gallon of water I have to worry about in Jasper County. Same holds true in Harden County and Orange. So I'd like to see that as well. I'm going to echo the same thoughts that Judge Brannick had about the acquisition buyout program. Under Harvey, round one, we had a lot of problems with it. It's, you've got people that are generational, they've, their grandparents bought the homes or the land, and they don't want to sell it. They don't want to get out for money, or they want to keep it. And I would like to see more money put in infrastructure and mitigation as opposed to that, so that way we can rebuild these roads, rebuild these drains, work as a region to get that water out so that they can stay where they were born and raised. And it's more important to take care of Texans than trying to move them out of their homes. I appreciate your time, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your public comment. John Beard with the Port Arthur Community Action Network. On deck, Mr. David Douglas from Liberty County.
John Beard, Port Arthur Community Action Network. I'd like to thank the GLO for staging this event, for you to get our comments. And my comments are mostly concerning the city of Port Arthur. It goes without saying, it's one of the more heavily impacted or severely impacted areas of southeast Texas due to the Harvey event. But not only did Harvey event affected us, we didn't get effects from Amelda, but we got effects from other smaller events. So it points to a criticality of need in terms of our drainage system and how that works. And I would want that the GLO be especially mindful of the fact that we have a high number or high percentage of our residents are low to moderate income. We have a high number of residents who also live at or below the poverty line. Those things are things that have to be considered because those people have no voice but our voices to speak for them and to advocate for them so that we can get these repetitive flood events out of our area. Buyouts aren't the solution because getting rid of people is going to diminish our tax base, is going to diminish our population, and have numerous other economic effects. So what's the alternative? The alternative is to mitigate, and that's what this program is supposed to be about. So if we look at mitigation, it stands to reason that we have to have projects that are going to reduce the amount of flooding we have. And in part, that's because of the multiple cities that surround Port Arthur, a lot of their watershed, I would say more than 90% of their watershed goes through Port Arthur and impacts communities of people of color. That, to me, is a travesty, and we need to look at better ways to allow the system to work properly by deloading the system, diverting those waters away from Port Arthur and those affected communities, and increase the probability they dry. If we do that, then there can be some good measures. Also, in concluding, I'd like to speak to the fact that the General Land Office needs to pay particular attention to the results that they get and how money is being spent. Quite often, monies and dollars are contributing into something, but we don't see the actual result or the backing of it. The disaster recovery monies, I know there's been a lot poured into the area, but to speak for myself, I don't see a lot of that activity. And we talk about resilience and being stronger and better the next time. Well, we're not getting a lot of time. You're giving six to 10 years or more to get things in order and to get these projects online, but we're suffering right now. These cities are suffering right now. We've had three major events since Harvey, and they've caused significant flooding. One of my former constituents, when I served on city council, is here, and she applied to the program for housing 10 years ago for Ike, and has only in the last eight months gotten housing. That's entirely too long. People are suffering now, and they're going, being put through repetitive events. So we have to look at the speed of how we address these things and concerns. We have to bring practical solutions to that to alleviate repetitive flood events, and we need stronger oversight and a direct working relationship on the local level, on the city and county level, and Drainage District and other, other administrations and government bodies to make these things work. So thank you again for your time. These are my comments.
Thank you for your public comment. Mr. David Douglas with Liberty County. On deck, Orange County Judge John Gothia.
Morning. My name's David Douglas. I'm the engineering judge for Liberty County. Judge Jay Knight sends his wishes today, keeping away from this meeting today. I want to thank you particularly for coming down. I know how hard it is for you to break free from Austin. We guys will move forward from there. My first comment is about the low to moderate income requirements. We're going to encourage you to continue to work with HUD and see if we can't move that down some more. Liberty County's looking at a countywide project. We'll talk a little bit more in just a minute, but a 51 low, low to moderate income impact in county is very, very difficult. We would encourage you to continue to work on that. It's my understanding that Louisiana got some, got some downsizing on that requirement back a couple of years ago, so maybe, maybe Texas can also. Please continue to work on that. Liberty County, like a lot of folks here, had the dubious honor of participating in flooding in 16, 17, and also 19. And when I say flooding, I'm talking about housing with two to three feet of water in it over widespread areas. We have to do something, and we feel like we've got a plan in line. We've talked with GLO some already about a countywide drainage study and a drainage plan. We are the best people to craft what we need within our county rather than a regional approach. So we would encourage you, you go after this thing and structure it so that you can have regional plans and studies rather than three, four, five, 10 county studies. Things get bogged down, they don't get finished, they stretch out for years. We want to do our own study. We want to do it with our own people, and we want to control our destiny, and we feel like we're better capable of doing that, studies. Please work on that also. Housing, heard several people talk about buyouts. Collins on that? Buyouts work for Liberty County primarily because a third of this county is tied up in the Trinity River flood basin. We've got a lot of people that live out there. They've been there a long time. Most of them have now been experienced a major flood four times in the last few years. So they're ready for buyouts. And we've got a policy in place, and we've talked with the Texas Parks and Wildlife because this, because these locations are along the river and in the flood basin. We can donate the properties to Texas Parks and Wildlife in perpetuity. There won't be any maintenance on them, and they will be used for the general public of Texas. So again, thanks for coming down today. And Jonah, I got you on speed dial, brother. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Karen Stewart with Drainage District Number Six. On deck, Don Corona with Orange County Drainage District. Karen Stewart?
Hello, I'm Karen Stewart with Jefferson County Drainage District Six, and I definitely agree with all the sentiment, and I think all of the statements that everyone's made are just so well-founded, and every one of them has legitimacy. To address one thing, at Drainage District Six, it's kind of been my mission for the last six months to fight on behalf of all drainage districts with regard to community development block grants. I don't know if anyone from Drainage District Seven is here, but you may want to back me up on this a bit. Currently, they've got the DR program, which is the disaster recovery, and now we've got the mitigation plan. It is my understanding that drainage districts may perhaps be eligible to be the recipient instead of a sub-sub recipient. In the past, all of these funds have gone to a county, and it's been up to us to try to partner with our county to get some of those funds. When you're focusing on infrastructure... When you're focusing on infrastructure and drainage and flood protection and prevention and resilience, it seems to me that the drainage districts should be eligible for these funds because we have a sole focus of mitigating flood damage in the future. We've got projects in development. I know that Drainage District Six, as well as Drainage District Seven and the other 20 to 30 entities, drainage districts throughout the state of Texas, have plans in place. This is our mission. And while we're very, very grateful to work with Jeff Brannick in Jefferson County and the commissioners here, we're very grateful that we've been able to partner with them, both now for disaster funds and in the past. It does pose an additional level of administration, to say the very least, to not be able to directly manage those funds through our own entity. So we will continue to be grateful to work with them, partnership with them. We will also be happy to join the conversation on the regional watershed planning for flood prevention, which we are taking part of, and we would like to to partake in that in the future. But we would like to consider, and I would like maybe Heather, I'm not sure who Heather LaGroen is, but over here, you're Heather. It's nice to meet you. I was like, where's Heather? Verify whether we are in fact eligible directly for these MIT funds or if it will be an allocation through the county. Again, I think there's just a little conversation about that, so. Take the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your public comment. Don Corona with Orange County Drainage District. I want to remind folks that we will continue to take public input as long as we have these cards. We are coming to the end of our stack. Therefore, if there's public input that you would like to provide, thoughts that you had as you've listened to other folks speak, please make sure to submit one of these and get it over to us so that we can have you up here on the podium and have your recorded public comment. Whenever we get to the end of our stack and there's no further public input, we will have to conclude our public hearing. So apologies, Mr. Corona. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Don Corona, Orange County Drainage District. Karen pretty well stole my thunder, but we can't be too careful with this issue. First of all, I want to thank the GLO for being here. Mark, I want to thank the GLO for working with us in Orange County with respect to Sabine Pass to Galveston Bay. I know it's a little bit off-topic, but it's incredibly important to us. Appreciate what y'all are doing, and we do want to go forward. We need to. Karen mentioned is something that we've been talking about. We're the only drainage district in Orange County. We're not an island, in a way I wish we were. We have some neighbors to the north, and so we share water. The Drainage District in Orange County, it's imperative that we be in terms of eligibility for the mitigation fund projects. Just as Karen, I could just ditto every single word that Karen stated. It's extremely important. We, we need mitigation projects to build the resiliency in Orange County. We will be working closely with our county and with all the cities in Orange County, but we are the Drainage District, as Karen noted. That's what we do day in, day out. And so we would really appreciate just, we've talked to, I've talked to a few in the General Land Office regarding our eligibility. I'm being told that we are eligible, but we really need clarity on this issue, and we would, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Do have one more. This does conclude our stack, so if there are other public comments to be provided, please make sure that we get these cards to our staff members now. So this last one that I have for right now is C.D. Woodrum with the City of Ivanhoe.
For the opportunity, and I'm going to make this very brief, appreciate y'all being in this area. And considering the things that we've heard this morning, I appreciate the folks back in Austin listening. One of the things, what I feel that would be best looked at is that whereas in the information on the summary, at least 50% of the CDBG MIT funds must benefit low to moderate income as well, storms do not recognize affluent or low to moderate communities or boundaries, and neither should mitigation assistance. It also says that at least 50% of the allocation must address mitigation needs in the HUD designated most impacted and distressed communities or counties and zip codes. I think 100% of the allocation should go to all of the areas that have distress that they're trying to recover from. Another area, reinforcing Mr. David Waxman's comments earlier, local officials know their community needs and best address those with assistance from the state. And lastly, the Texas Water Development Board is working on the watershed and basin drainage, so let's not duplicate effort here. Do their stuff with water, and the GLO funds utilized on land use. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Do have one more. Rick's with Gulf Coast Leadership Council. Got anymore? Now is a really great time.
Hi. Thank you all for being here. We definitely appreciate GLO and the public officials that were here earlier. We thank you for your time. I wanted to recommend and propose some strategies to address the underlying issues and barriers that we're currently facing, and the trends that you see regionally that impact the recovery process. And the underlying issues are individuals not having clear titles to hold the property or to be eligible. So I, although I appreciate and I'm glad that the funds in your strategy do not require tieback to to a specific event, though those individuals may not have to have that tieback, that does remove a barrier, but the other underlying barrier of not having the title in their name or deed in their name, as well as back taxes and lack of financial education, still poses a barrier, because we can provide more funding, but the same individuals will still be hit by the same or additional storms and be in the same place, and the funding will just pass them by because they will not be able to qualify. So my proposal is that the strategy be proactive, number one, through education, and providing education and outreach events specifically for wills and estate planning and making sure the public and community members understand the processes and steps to hold a clear title and how to pass that along from one generation to the next. And then for the other piece of the strategy to be action-oriented, to take action through clear title clinics, so that action steps to clear titles for homeowners to be eligible for the funding that you're proposing be available for rebuilds or repairs. Then the net, the final strategy is a blend of being proactive as well as taking action in terms of financial education to address back taxes, financial planning for disasters so families can learn how to budget and prepare for these. Not that you can be 100% prepared, but you could have something in the works, as well as include, including flood and homeowner insurance education, so they can put processes in place to be more resilient on their own feet and hopefully be able to keep our tax base present in here. So that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. 30 more seconds for any folks who would like to fill out a public comment card and get it over to our staff members right over here. Any public input? I'm counting down rapidly in my head. Excellent. Okay. Seeing no further comment cards being submitted to GLO staff members, we're going to conclude this Texas General Land Office Public Hearing on Mitigation Funds at 1:21 PM on Tuesday, October 1st. For individuals who are webcasting and displaying this digitally, all questions that are posed in WebEx will also be taken into consideration for the action plan. So thank you for dialing into WebEx, and we'll see you next time. Thank y'all. Thank y'all, everybody.